...in, rolls on in here. You might think it's going to get cold here tomorrow, but my family lives in western Kansas. Their high today is five. So we've got a warm front coming in. So just in case you thought you knew. This meeting is officially called to order. As usual, we will start with our chaplain prayer and pledges. So if Marcella Jenkins would come forward and lead us in both.
Good morning to everyone out there. Let's bow our heads and pray. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the life itself, for the measures of health we need to fulfill our callings, for substance and for our friendships. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you. Thank you for loving us even so, for your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, if I pray for our mayor, the Honorable Brenda Gunter, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council and for our first responders, I'm asking that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern among the conflicting interest and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is a honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, enjoyment in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of San Angelo. It's in your blessed name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. My pleasure allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, unindivisible.
It is the recognition of the United Way of the Concho Valley's centennial year. So if you all come forward. To the next 100, United Way of the Concho Valley is thrilled to celebrate its centennial year, marking 100 years of dedicated service and impact in the Concho Valley. Since 1925, United Way of the Concho Valley has remained steadfast in its mission to improve lives by harnessing the caring power of this community. Through funding essential programs and addressing critical needs in education, health, and financial stability, the United Way has played a vital role in creating opportunities and fostering hope for all. For a century, the United Way of the Concho Valley has united the community to confront challenges, support those in need, and create opportunities for a brighter future. Thanks to the unwavering generosity of partners, donors, and volunteers, countless residents of San Angelo and the surrounding region have benefited from the organization's efforts. Through its work, the United Way has empowered a network of social service agencies to deliver vital programs that address the most pressing needs of the community. These include providing emergency food and shelter, supporting children through educational and after-school initiatives, access to mental health services, preventing and treating substance use, services for survivors of child abuse and domestic violence, and preventing homelessness. As it celebrates this historic milestone, the United Way of the Concho Valley remains committed to its founding values of collaboration, service, and hope. Looking forward, the organization will continue to innovate and adapt to meet the ever-changing needs of the community, ensuring that every individual in the Concho Valley has the opportunity to thrive. The City of San Angelo fully supports the United Way of the Concho Valley, and we ask that you do the same. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby recognize and applaud United Way of the Concho Valley for its achievement and positive determination to make a difference in our community. So true. Would you like to speak?
Yes, I would.
Come on.
Thank you so much, Mayor Gunter. My name is Ashley Ammons, and I am the president and CEO of the United Way, and I just want to say thank you. For 100 years, this community has been supporting the United Way. You're helping us have the resources to be able to help those who most need it in our community. We've been saying this whole year, we have a whole lot of plans, and so while we are going to be looking back on the past 100 years, we are actually real excited to look forward to the next 100. What we can do for this community, what we can do for every person in our community, in San Angelo, in the Concho Valley, making sure that we're providing hope, a hand up, and just being there for our neighbors. And that is possible because of you, so thank you all so much.
We will now move into public comment. Members of the public may raise issues or concerns not listed on the regular agenda during this time. To participate, please sign in with a city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be called in the order they signed in. When speaking, citizens must speak from the podium, address all comments to the deus, begin by stating your name and address, or single member district number, and limit their remarks to three minutes or less. Do we have anyone here to speak to public comment?
Yes, ma'am. Kiva Stone.
Okay. Kiva, would you come forward?
Do I hand them to y'all, or? Good morning. My name is Kiva Stone, and I am the homeowner of 2501 West Avenue L., San Angelo, Texas. I purchased my home in 2017, and in 18, I had a driveway port so I could park my vehicle somewhere besides the grass or street like previous owners. In '21, I had a carport installed to increase the property value, limit congestion in pedestrian and vehicular traffic on public streets, and prevent hail damage to the vehicle so my premiums would not increase or be denied. In your packet on page 3B, there's a listing of 87 National Weather Service issued severe weather warning where hail was reported in San Angelo since I purchased the home in 2017. September 24, I received a notice of compliant violation for not having a permit for my three-year-old carport. In your packet, you have a timeline of all the things I've done to try to acquire a permit. After numerous trips to City Hall and speaking to several different people, I was told they would look at my request and get back to me in a week. I've not heard from anyone from City Hall. On page one of your packet is an aerial view of my home. I live on an island across from ASU with only two homes. I have no alley. Avenue N. butts up to my backyard, and the side yard is Johnson Street, very high-traffic streets. Therefore, I do not have accessibility to a carport in my backyard or side yard. On page 2 and 3A of your packet is my home before and after the driveway and carport. I've tried to do nothing but make my house better and increase its property value. Rudy Abara, compliance officer, called me each week to see if there had been any resolution to my notice of violation. I explained all I had done and that no one from City Hall would get back in touch with me. October the 7th, on my third trip to City Hall, I was asked to speak with Austin Reed in planning. On pages 12 through 14 of your packet are pictures of other carports in my neighborhood. I asked Austin why others in the neighborhood were able to have carports, and asked to see if the map of my neighborhood on the computer. On page 11 of your packet, I was showing Austin other homes that had carports, and he noticed that there was a carport directly across the street from me and that we were not in the open structure zone. The dark area on the map shows where there is an open structure zone, and there's about four and a half blocks north of Avenue N. that are not in that zone. He recommended I get in touch with my city council representative to see if the March 23rd, 1959 ordinance could be changed. You see in the timeline my numerous attempts to contact my city council representative, either by phone or email. My neighbor across the street received a notice this January for his 24-year-old carport and was ordered to take it down by the end of the month. He did, and you can see on page 12, now we have a tent and an umbrella covering the vehicles. November 8, '24 was the last time Rudy called and asked me what my plan was, and I told him I guessed that we would have to file a criminal complaint with the city attorney's office like the penalty stated in my violation letter. There was no contact for three months from anyone. February 10, last month, I received another notice of violation with two violations, Chapter 12, Section 513 and Section 107. I'm asking for a variance to these ordinances since I'm on an island with no alley or side yard for a carport and/or updating the ordinances so we can be included in the open structure zone and allowing me to get a carport.
You'll need to wrap up. Thank you. Go ahead. Your last comment.
Thank you for your time, and I truly would like guidance on how to resolve this issue.
Thank you. Is Aaron in the room today? Aaron Vane is here. He's over planning. If you would get with him following this meeting or now.
Okay.
And see what we can discuss and work out.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is that the end of public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
We will now move into our consent agenda. There is one item, which is Item I, that has been removed for the consent agenda and will not be discussed today. With that, I am going to ask if there are any other items from the consent agenda that need to be pulled for consideration or conversation. Larry?
No, ma'am.
Karen?
No, ma'am.
Lucy?
No, ma'am.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
Tom, scared you, didn't I? Harry?
No, ma'am.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda with exception of the item I, which has been removed?
Still move.
Still move by Harry?
Aye.
Seconded by Tom. Public comment on anything on consent agenda?
No.
With that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, consent agenda has been passed 7 to 0. We will move into our regular agenda item. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. To participate, please sign in with a city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be called in the order they signed in. Comments are limited to less than three minutes. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. We will start with Item A. Consider Resolution Designating a Venue Project for the McNeese Convention Center and Identifying Project Financing. Tina, you are on on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Tina Dierski, Director of Finance. To start off, we're going to have, I think, Al and Sid maybe come up and kind of discuss the project and what would be involved, and then when they're finished with that and answer any questions you might have, then we'll go into the process of a venue tax.
Okay. Good morning.
Counsel. My name is Al Torres, Construction Manager for the City of San Angelo. Basically, I was asked to look at the possibility of expanding our convention center specifically to add an exhibit hall and some meeting rooms. So what you have here is basically a site plan of the existing site, showing in red what I would propose to add. You know, this isn't, of course, a final design. This is just something that could happen. So what I'm showing here is a 20,000-square-foot exhibit hall, which is this area here. 20,000 square feet is the size of the exhibit hall in Abilene and a couple of other places. That's pretty standard, so that's what I went with. I'm also showing a lot of, you know, back-of-house spaces, loading docks, storage areas, a big lobby in the front that can be used for gathering, other meetings, things like that. I'm also showing additional meeting spaces that would go above the existing north meeting room. We'd have to look and see if that's structurally feasible, but I think it might be. So anyway, so this is, I don't remember how to change pages here. So I think, is this Tina's slide or my slide? Okay. So basically, the existing square footage is 35,765 square feet. What I've shown drawn is about 47,300 square feet. That's the exhibit hall plus meeting rooms plus all the accessory spaces, more bathrooms, hallways, corridors, that large lobby in the front, for a total of 83,000. And like I said, that includes a 20,000-square-foot exhibit hall. We currently have eight breakout rooms, and I'm including this room as three, everywhere we have the divisions. It could be a separate breakout room, so we have total of, we have these three, three in the north meeting room that can also be divided, and the two upstairs. We would add seven new ones, so we'd have a total of breakout rooms of 15. So this is Tina's. So basically, again, it's just a very preliminary design. Hopefully, it's enough information for you to kind of decide on whether to move forward or not. I think the rest of it is up to Tina.
Before Tina comes up, could I have Jeremy Bartz come forward? Jeremy, you want to talk about the need for the McNeese Convention Center?
Absolutely. You know, everything that Art just showed us is exactly what we're looking for. Some of the things that we've heard are breakout space being an availability issue, exhibit hall space being lacking. The one question I had, can we use this room as a breakout room considering it is city council chambers? Is that even an option?
This thing can turn on. Jeremy, actually, when we take a look at what we want to do moving forward with the convention center, absolutely, we can talk about that and see how the whole facility can actually be used. Especially, we're talking about bringing big conferences or bigger conferences to our community.
Right.
You better believe we'd be looking at ways to actually, maybe, we have a separation already in the middle of the room anyway, but we can talk about that.
Outstanding. So that, again, addresses a lot of needs, as you and I have spoken, as many of us have spoken in the past, that without that additional exhibit space, there are limitations on the numbers of groups that we can get here. The meeting space is great. We'll pack it on Thursday night with 550 people plus a stage, and that's going to be great. Having that additional space for exhibit halls would be phenomenal and something that we desperately need. So I thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Al?
I did want to add that after we drew this up and talked about it a little bit, Carl and Rick and Sid and I went and visited several convention centers in the area. We went to Wichita Falls, Midland, Abilene, and toured their facilities. And in doing that, we got a lot of great ideas for other things that are not in here. One of those things was, and again, like I said, this is a preliminary design, so once we hire somebody and get an actual design laid out and everybody, all the parties are involved in what we need, what we don't need, it's possible that we may create a new council chamber somewhere else in the project, and this will become strictly meeting rooms. You know, those are questions that need to be answered as we go down the road, so.
Okay. Thank you. Tina?
So the purpose of this Agenda item was basically kind of a concept discussion to get your buy-in and whether you're wanting to make some improvements to the convention center. And the way that we would finance that would be through a venue tax. So a venue tax adds 2% to the existing hotel occupancy tax, which currently that's 15%. 7% of that goes to the city and 6% goes back to the state. The venue tax would support the approved designated venue project, so it has to be a specific project, even so specific that our bond attorneys would like to list the address so that it, you know, doesn't, down here where, you know, that three-year limitation comes in, it doesn't cause any other venue projects to be inhibited because of this particular venue tax election, if it's called. And then it presents residents, obviously, the option to vote for or against the tax. And so once, if this resolution is passed by the city council today, the next steps would be, you would act formally to start the process. We would then send the signed resolution to our bond attorneys, which they would then send that to the state comptroller to basically ask permission for us to implement a venue tax, and that's just to give the state the opportunity to decide whether a venue tax would have any impact on their revenue sources. From what our bond attorneys have told us, the hotel tax is usually a pretty easy one to get passed by the state, and so we don't foresee any problems with that. But if they do deny it, then the next step would be for us to file an appeal to still try to get the venue tax, if that's what the city council wants to do. And then if they do approve it, we'd probably call for an election in November, depending, again, what city council wants. And the proposition must include both the hotel tax as a financing source as well as the actual project that's planned.
So just to be very clear on this idea, this concept, it does not in any way impact property tax? Is that correct?
No, it's not expected. As long as the venue tax and other financing sources are at a level that are able to fund the debt service on the project, yes, we would not expect any tax, property tax, impact at all.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
Actually, Tina, for further clarification, talk about the 2% as far as who would actually pay for the venue when it comes to the venue tax.
Right, right. So that, again, it's added onto the hotel tax, so really, it's being paid by travelers and tourists that come into the city when they stay at one of our hotels or at a short-term rental.
So the citizens who live in San Angelo will not necessarily be the, unless they had family in town or wedding or something.
Right. More than likely, it would be those coming into the community that would be supplementing this.
And I would assume that the many, many cities, many I know is not a number, but there's a large number of cities who have a venue tax.
You're correct. Yes, ma'am. Many of our, you know, what we would call sister cities or comparable cities even have this venue tax in place right now for different convention centers and venues in their communities.
So this is not unusual? This is pretty standard process in terms of expanding or building convention centers?
I would say yes, it is.
Questions from counsel? Larry?
Yes, ma'am. On the bottom there, it says the type of financing for the project. Can you expand on that, please?
That's just referring to this, the type of venue tax. There are several, I think, Brandon, like six or seven different types of venue taxes. And so there's one that you can put on car rentals, adding a percentage to that, you know, parking fees at the airport. There's different types, so that is designating this specific 2% on the hotel tax. And then that would be used to leverage against a debt issue that would pay for the project. Last year, at the end of the year, if we had had this 2% included in our hotel tax rate, that would have yielded about $850,000 last year. And so with that, we've looked recently at some debt service issues in the range of $15 to $25 million, and of course, you know, timing and interest rates come into play with that, but most recently, we've looked at the debt service payments that would be somewhere between $1.1 and $2 million on a $15 to $25 million project. So that just kind of gives you an idea how much this could fund and what it could do to help us leverage a bigger project like this.
Tommy?
I guess this may be for Al. Is Al still here? Is this, does this give you enough time, or whomever, enough bit, you or you working with an architect or whatever, between now and November? For me, this is new to me. I'm just wondering if we've got enough information on which you were able to, I'll say, base your rendering that you put in the packet. Is it enough time between now and November to make sure this meets the needs that we have?
I would say yes, assuming we start pretty soon and send out RFPs or RFQs and get an architect engineer on board pretty quick so they can start that process and get everybody together and get that done.
Okay.
The other thing is that the clock really starts clicking, so, ticking.
Clicking.
Yeah. Actually, when the venue tax is voted in, and so in November, when the community approves or disapproves the venue tax, that's, you have a year from that point to issue the bonds. And so, you know, depending on whether we want to use those bond funds to pay for the design, it may not be that we have to have the project shovel-ready at that point. So that will give them at least time to, you know, look at different ideas and have better ideas of what and how we want to do the project.
But at the least, still, we need to get a firm quote or cost estimate in place so we know how much money we're talking about. So yeah, that would, should give us enough time between now and then.
Thanks.
Tom?
First things first, we've needed this so long, and we finally have an identifiable, very specific venue. Fortunately, with my job, I get to travel the entire United States. I can't tell you how many other people's convention centers and things I personally have funded, all right? It's great to finally see something like this coming here to give away and a path forward. My question to you is, we talk about this as just hotel-specific. Can we expand that to include rental cars and things that may come in? Like, let's say we cover parking at the airport within the 20-year window of this venue tax. Can we expand this venue tax to cover things that we might add? I don't want to do the venue tax and limit ourselves if there's another way to tax the parking at the airport and rental cars. I mean, I pay those fees all over the U.S. I just don't want to get the cart in front of the horse here. And if it's not a way, it should never block the path, but I don't want to limit us to where we could gain extra money.
Are you asking if we could do two separate types of tax for this one project, or if it would limit us with future venues?
So my question right now is, it's just on hotel tax. Can we include rental cars and future parking?
Brandon and I would probably need to research that. I have seen one community in the recent past, an article that came across my desk, where they did do a hotel tax and a car rental tax, but I don't know the specifics and how they made it work, but it's something we could look into.
That's fine. I just don't want to cut ourselves short. If there's ways to shorten it or provide us additional income, that, like Brenda says, this does not have to go at all on the taxpayer here, property tax in San Angelo, Texas. This is by travel and basically tourism coming to Angelo.
The other issue, Tom, on that is, and I think it's great you're thinking outside the lines here, but we also could have future projects at the airport that you'd want the monies, the tax monies, to be used for improvements at the airport, which we know can be an economic engine. So we also don't want to limit our opportunity to continue to develop the airport because of this. This we ought to be able to afford through the venue tax and bond and not hold ourselves obligated to other opportunities down the road, which I think we want to look at.
Right. So I'm with you on that, Brenda. I just, I think it'd be easier to drop those things out, or not move forward, but I get it. We don't want to handicap ourselves.
We don't, particularly when the airport's a significant opportunity.
Cool.
I'd like Sidney Walker to come forward as well, please.
Good morning, Counsel. Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning. Just talk about this facility and the need for expansion and improvement of the facility.
Yes, obviously, I've been here at the McNeese Convention Center for quite some time, and obviously, with the, we do get, we work with CBB in regards to the bringing in, trying to bring in conventions, and I mean, one of the things that does hold us back is not having the proper space that's needed to be able to bring in these conventions. So we're already against the grain whenever we're going against some of these other cities because we don't have the adequate space that's needed. Obviously, we can do more with a lot more space that's in our convention center if we can have the proper rooms, proper breakout rooms. Exhibition hall would be great for bigger trade shows that we can bring in, and I just feel that this is something that we should be able to push forward, and let's give it to the, to our, to the people of the city, the citizens of the city to be able to vote on this, on this project.
Yes, Danielle?
Mayor, I also want to point out that on our end, we talk about the venue tax and what that would cost, 2% to visitors to our community, but with a bigger facility, and as Jeremy mentioned a while ago, to be able to go out there and truly recruit and bring conventions to our community, you have people staying in our hotels, you have people spending money locally, you have sales tax revenues that'll go up as well. As we know, sales tax supplement our property tax revenues, so really, that would help the property taxpayers, especially if we're looking at the improvements the community needs, infrastructure-wise, what have you. That could actually bring those monies in the revenues as well, so I just wanted to point that out.
And again, this does not cost the citizens any money.
None at all.
This is paid for through this venue tax. It's the opportunity and the way that many cities have developed convention centers. And we know our hotel people need us to bring in conventions and more people to stay in our hotels, our hotel motel tax. Our hotel motel tax is down. We need to look forward to figure out a way to support the hotels, which we desperately need, and we need them to be successful. And this project is one of those avenues to help us get that done.
Yes, and like you said, we visited Wichita Falls, Abilene, Midland. And I mean, just going to those facilities, we just noticed we're definitely behind. And we need to, we need to get up to speed.
We've got a lot of competition.
Mayor.
Quick question.
Yes, Lucy?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you, how long, how old is this building?
This building is actually, I believe it's 1982.
03.
Yes. Not 03, definitely not 03.
Yes, correct.
81, 82. Yes, 81, 82. The last renovations was 2008.
Yeah, well, I agree with everyone up here is that, yeah, we're definitely in need of expanding and bringing in those conventions into our city for the mere fact of getting some more revenue and keep going. So I'm very much for this project.
Yes, Karen?
Sid and maybe Jeremy, I'm curious how often we lose an opportunity. Can you quantify that in any way, or is it too vague?
So Sid and I were just talking. Sid lost one last year, we lost two, just due to the lack of space, lack of breakout space. And I will only count those two because those were two that were RFPs where every other need was met. It was the breakout space and the exhibit hall space that we did not have. And so we ended up losing that one. So that, again, I won't speak for Sid, but I know that is a consideration every single time we have someone that reaches out to us. They need that larger space. It's just when they're wanting to bring in 500, 600 people, they need the space to be able to place out their wares, host their main meeting, and then have breakout spaces as well. So, you know, one benefit that wasn't mentioned here, we are one of the lowest in terms of average daily rate that people can stay. Our dollar stretches further in the city of San Angelo. A 2% hotel occupancy tax, venue tax, does not necessarily hurt travel to San Angelo. In fact, it may end up helping it. It makes it seem like it's the place to be. So as we've talked through average daily rates, we've talked through various different things, you know, we're always on the lower end of the spectrum, which is a fantastic thing. You can come here and you can spend your money and you can have a little to go home with. We're just asking for 2% on top of that. It just adds to the allure of the city and drives people here as well.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Jeremy, just really quickly, so you mentioned you lost out on two, you lost out on one. But of course, when you send a proposal out and you show what we actually have, sometimes you want to hear from those individuals. So again, you really truly don't know what you actually missed out on because when they go out, you have an...
We may have missed more than that.
Absolutely.
Once the, once the RFP was sent and they looked at our location, looked at the facilities that we had, we may have lost 10 to 12. We just don't know.
There you go.
Some of them just don't respond.
The other issue is that many of these conventions that hold annual conventions, there's on a five-year roll.
Three to five years, yes ma'am.
And so that means if we said no to you today, because you said no to us today because we don't have the facility, it's going to be three to five years before they come talk to you again anyway. So we've got a timeframe to improve the scenario so that the next go-around with many of these repetitive conventions, we would have our foot in the door because we could actually say yes.
Absolutely.
We have.
And that is something that we've put our place in, or put a foot in the door with now to say we want on those lists.
Yes.
We've just got to, we've got to take what we can get while we can get it now and then move on as we, as we continue to expand.
Harry?
Yes, since I'm the only council person that hasn't spoken, I want to say I appreciate we've got to, yeah, got to this particular spot. I worked with Jeremy and his predecessors over the years, Convention and Visits Bureau, DMO, to try to make sure that we've got people come to San Angelo to see what we've got. We know we got to get them here before they'll move here. And having that opportunity, I think, is great. I'm a little surprised that we got to this stage so quickly, but I'm glad we did. So I'm in favor of making this move, go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harry.
Anything else?
Yes, Karen, and then...
I have a follow-up question.
Okay.
I don't think anyone questions the need for this, for this sort of project. I certainly don't. I think we do need it and we are lagging behind. However, my question pertains to, how did we determine scope of work? Or are we in a position now that as we go, excuse me, as we go forward, scope of work for, to maximize our return on investment can be considered as we move along? As an architect may be hired? I don't mean to put words in anyone's mouth, but we all would, of course, want to maximize the city's return on investment. Scope of work, how do we figure it out?
I'll have to defer to Al on that one because I'm not an architect at all.
That's a good question, Karen. And to be honest, the scope of work isn't finalized yet. You know, that's one of the first things we'll do as part of this process. Right now, I was just looking at, is it feasible to do the big picture? You know, get the exhibit hall in there, get the meeting rooms, parking? Do we have room on this site to do that? Which, my answer to that is yes, I believe we do. As to all the actual scope of work, that's something that, again, like I said, we'll have to get a group together as we move forward and say, what else do we need? Like I said, visiting the other places, I've already got other ideas and things that we can adjust this and add to. Sid's already mentioned he wants a larger kitchen. I think there should be better connections between the kitchen and the two spaces. So a lot of things like that. Another thing that I think is important is the connection of the convention center to the river space. We should probably do something to kind of, and I addressed that a little bit in that design, but you know, those are things that we need to decide. What else do we need to add? What else needs to change or to make this the best convention center we can get?
Flexibility between now and...
Yes.
And I can add a little bit to that. Our bond council, the resolution that they prepared, the way they summarized is the designing, acquiring, constructing, purchasing, renovating, improving, upgrading, updating, enlarging, demolishing, and equipping of the existing convention center locations. So they left it very broad.
I know it's been said several times that there's no cost to the taxpayers to do this project. I just want to say for myself that it, we just need to be fiscally conservative, know what we're spending our money on before we spend it. And if we don't really know exactly what we're getting, hence my question. That's all.
Right.
Larry?
There's a screaming need for that exhibit hall. But I'm curious as to why we need 15 breakout rooms? Are you considering simultaneous conventions or...
That's a question for Jeremy.
Larry, I can speak to that. That is a common concern that we have is when you have a group of, say, 500 to 600 people that are here for a gathering space in the middle of the event space. That's great. But there will be several breakouts that take place where they have, say for instance, a speaker in one room that'll host 200, and then you've got another speaker in another room that may only host 15 to 20. You need to be able to divide those rooms out equally for the size of the group that you need. So that's the reason for the number of breakout spaces. It's not every convention that is that way. It's not every trade show that is that way. But if you go to some of the larger conventions that we've been to and part of what we see in the travel industry, you will have specific areas where people want to go, learn certain things about the travel industry itself. But that's remedial for certain other people. So they would go to a separate breakout space. You just need to have the flexibility of having that available to you.
Well, my experience on it is limited to when we had the TML conference up here.
Yes.
And you know, they don't need anywhere near that, but we're still dealing with perhaps 500 people.
Sure. And certain places don't require it at all. Certain groups do not require it at all. But in case of the, I won't speak to the name of it, but one particular group needed 20,000 square foot of exhibit space, 14 breakout spaces, 13,000 event space, 13,000 square feet of event space. This would check off all of those boxes and allow us to bring that group in, meaning that it would all be encompassed in one location. We were looking at trying to cobble together five different places in town to put that together, and they said we won't come. And it's a large group.
That kind of leads me to my next question. In our decision-making process, is an impediment, a lack of our hotel space closely connected to the area?
Not necessarily directly impacting it, but it is, it is a concern. You know, one thing that we've, we've tried to make sure that we do from a DMO and CBB perspective is not to tout one particular hotel over another. I know in other cities where this hotel occupancy tax addition has been made, that that is the downtown hotel that supports that convention center. We don't want to be in that situation. We need all of our hotel partners. You know, one thing that we, again, one of the benefits of being in San Angelo is a 10-minute drive anywhere, most days, right?
12.
12, depending on what you're doing, right? Depending on what you're doing, 10 to 12 minutes.
Well, the other issue is, is the following, that even when, let's say, we have a hotel next to the convention center and we have rooms blocked out, what you find is many convention-goers don't even take advantage of that because they might have Marriott miles.
Right.
I mean Marriott points, they might have Holiday Inn points, and they choose to stay where their points accumulate.
Loyalty is loyalty.
Regardless of that. And that is always an issue, so...
And unless we had a 600, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there they are, down there, the guilty ones.
A 6 to 700-room hotel downtown would be adequate for that particular process. So if we're talking about putting in 600 to 700 rooms in one hotel, then certainly that could, that could be your convention hotel.
You know, the thing that Karen brought up about being conservative, remember, over 51% of our sales tax dollars come from outside the citizens of San Angelo, Texas. If we can't find ways to drive the sales tax revenue, the sales tax revenue will not grow. And that is a key component of our revenue structure. We have two areas, property tax, sales tax. And we can't, and the one we can impact most aggressively is bringing things into our city to increase sales tax dollars. We need the tourism dollars. We need those sales tax dollars to grow. And this avenue is one of those most important ways.
Absolutely. And the revenue generated last year, as you all heard back in May, I mean, it saved average taxpayers anywhere from 400 to 467 dollars, depending on the size of their, their home, last year. So that is, that is something that every time we have someone come in, that's a general concern. So that's fiscal responsibility in my mind.
And this is one opportunity to bring in excess revenue that will not increase property tax rate or dollars.
It may help it.
It may help it, which is key.
We hope it will.
Yes. Other questions, comments, rebuttals?
Not really rebuttal. I just, I just want us to be good planners, good planners before we go forward.
We'll have a plan. There'll be a plan. May I have a motion? A motion by Lucy? Second by Harry? Public comment, Heather? With that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving this item A, please say aye.
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 Are there any individuals opposed? With there are no, no votes, then this motion passes 7-0.
And travel time, depending on who you're riding with.
Yes, how fast, how quick you get there.
You can get there quicker than 10 minutes if you're riding with Tom.
No one's listening in the back of the room to that comment, I'm sure.
They got you.
There you go. Thank you, Sidney. All right, the next one is you as well. So item B is consider approving contract number 23-00019 for the purchase and installation of 14 HVAC units at the McNeese Convention Center at 501 Rio Concho Drive with advanced service group in the amount of $524,573, utilizing hot fund balance and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Sidney, you're on.
Yes, so you all have heard some of the issues that we've had with our HVAC units. So it would be great if we can get these items replaced. We're looking at trying to replace 14 of our top HVAC units that serve this, this meeting room as well as the south meeting room, upstairs meeting room, and the main lobby. I'm sorry, the north meeting room. This was installed in 2008, the HVAC units that we have currently. That's when they were installed. We've worked with facility maintenance on this item and we're, we've received a quote from ASG in the amount of $524,573. Sidney's staff has identified Fund 605 as the funding source for this. And the 605 fund balance is at 3.6 million currently. We will not need to close for any installation on this project. And all I'm looking for is just approval so we can get started on this item.
Questions or comments for Sidney?
Could this go out for bids?
Yes, I already did.
Other questions for Sidney?
Move to approve as presented.
Thank you, Harry. Second by Tommy. Any public comment, Heather? Okay. With that, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved, 7-0. Carl, you are on for item C. Discuss and consider the proposed theme, style, and scope for the Riverwalk Wayfinding signage and provide direction to staff regarding the funding of the project.
Yes. Last year, city council funded, budgeted some money for us to start looking at wayfinding, particularly wayfinding along the river. Trying to forward to the slide. Brian, can you help me forward the slide, please?
There we go.
So we started, we started this process looking at some guiding principles. First, in terms of the signage, the wayfinding signage, we looked at, wanted to look at function, locations in the map, where those signs would be located, the design of the signs, the cost of the signs, and the maintenance of the signs. We linked up with architect Craig Kenny, who was the primary architect on the river project back in 2011, finishing in 2013. And then we worked with the graphic arts class at ASU. That class with about 20 students, they paired up into teams of two. And we met with them several times to discuss the project, review their concepts and proposals, and give them some guidance on how to improve their proposals based on the guiding principles we had established. So the final concept, we'd like your input on and direction, if this is the way you'd like to proceed. This is the signage. There's three types of signs in the scope of this project. There are directional signs. This one is a directional sign. I'll discuss the materials here in a minute. So along the path, there would be directional signs between locations, directing you to those locations. Another type of sign, and I've got another image of this one, is a map sign. There will be fewer of these. They would be at key locations. You go up to the sign, you look at the map, you look where different locations are. And then there are information signs or placer signs that would be at key locations, letting folks know they've arrived at a location and information about what's at that location. Maps of the signs, so the western scope starts at Civic League Park. Currently, the eastern scope ends just past the nursing home across the river. You see the convention center here. A total right now of 24 signs. This is a closer look of the map sign. So again, it shows the map, locations, and the legend. Also, a star is showing you are here. These are still at the beginning stages of the detail of the information. And of course, we can add QR codes to these signs as well, a link to the website for more in-depth information. Another closer look at the graphics of the map. Materials, there's a concrete base. It's Corten steel, which is the steel that rusts and stays rusty and just looks like that forever, almost forever. We've used this at different locations. The sign at the Bosque, for example, some of the signs along the Red Arroyo, they've been there and haven't required any maintenance since we installed them. Brushed aluminum pin-mounted letters, weather-resistant polyurethane plastic signage, and brushed stainless steel brackets. Here's the, this is the Corten steel. This is the... Here's the, the Corten steel, this is the polyurethane signage, and these are the brushed letters, and these are the brackets at the end. I don't know why I can't get this going right, right? Looking at cost, the total of 24 signs, and some contingency, we're looking at a little over $211,000. We're not proposing any lighting for these signs. That would increase the cost and the maintenance of them. We have discussed whether we might want to extend the signage from the 24 signs to an additional three signs that would go all the way to the Texas Bank Sports Complex, adding another map sign, information sign, and a directional sign. That would increase the cost to about $236,000. At this point, the design for the project is budgeted, and we can proceed if this is the direction you would like us to go. Implementation for the project is not budgeted. Recommended funding source is the hotel occupancy tax. And if this is funded, we could proceed with the design and implement this project this year. And the way these signs are built, they're expandable, so we could extend them into different locations, different length of the trail, going back outside of the trail, if you would like that as well.
I know that the river is one of our greatest assets, and that many people utilize the river and are, and all the areas around the river, but no one knows where they're going. If you're from outside of San Angelo, Texas, and sometimes even when you're in San Angelo, Texas, you know you're on a trail, but you're not sure where it's going to go, or where it ends, or where it leads to. So we need a much better way of wayfinding to really improve the trails in the downtown river area. We've got to let people know where they're going. So, and I like what you've presented. I'm very glad that we involved Angelo State University students to help us in the concept of this and working with us. I think it's a great outreach. So I'm going to ask if there's council members who have comments or questions. Karen?
Totally agree. Think it's outstanding that you involve the graphic design students from the university, and gratitude to Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Kenny, sorry, Craig, for leading that, leading that effort. Just curious, what is the lifespan of the graphic component of the signs?
Would, the graphics?
When you see maps and pictures and whatnot, how quickly is that degraded by our?
Depends on how quickly we grow and develop and move on.
There you go.
Any kind of that signage is going to fade a little bit.
Sure.
This is similar to some of the signage, other signage we have at the Red Arroyo, which has been there since 2016, eight years. It's still looking pretty, pretty good, but I would suspect that within 15, 20 years, you may want to look at replacement.
Okay, that's pretty good.
That is pretty good. Yeah. Thank you.
Other questions and comments? Tom?
How sturdy are, I mean, I love the, I'll go in two parts here. I love how clean these are, all right? At places where I worked before, sometimes you try to sell every square inch you have, and when you're done, you have 67 different people advertising. I, I don't know about y'all, but I love how clean these are, and I don't know if commercially somebody's going to try to sell some sponsorships or things on them, but I just love the clean effect of it. Number two, and here's the one that you hate to, how easy could somebody, 10 guys, get over and push this thing over? Or can they knock this over?
I don't think they'd hold up to a car running over the butt.
I have put things up like this at other places before, and they have.
Don't give anybody an idea.
I know, I know. It's that crew.
This is Corten steel, about three inches thick. It'll have brackets in between it. It's on a concrete base, so it's going to be pretty sturdy. You're not going to be able to wiggle it and knock it over.
Okay.
But if a car runs off the road and hits it, it's not going to stay up.
Okay. No, you've answered everything I need.
Mayor, I'd move approval as presented.
Okay, great. Do I have a second? A second by Karen. Public comment on this item, Heather? No? Okay.
Question before we move off of this. Was the approval for the three additional signs, Tommy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good, good question. So the total number would, you presented, and that will come out of hotel occupancy tax, so it's a funded item. Okay. All right, so that vote is, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Get to work.
We'll, we'll come back with the budget.
Spring is coming up.
We'll come back with the budget amendment at the next meeting, a couple of minutes.
D, first reading of public hearing of an ordinance annexing into the city of San Angelo by petition of the property owner, unaddressed tracts with a total of 1,205.573 acres in Tom Green County, Texas, located south of US Highway 67, east of US Highway 277, and US Highway 67 interchange and Harriet Road, being more fully described in the adopting ordinance. And Aaron, you are on.
Thank you, Mayor. Aaron Villal, Planning and Development Services Director. This first item that I have this morning is an annexation of city-owned property to our, I would say to our northeast along Highway 80, or Highway 67. And you can see here on the map, if you were looking where we are, we're, we're down here on the left side, but right in here is the county facility that is right in that area. You can see 277 coming in here, and then 67 going across there. There are, a lot of this, all of this gray area is city-owned property. It is not owned by any other private owners at this time. This is an area for future development, whether that's extension of our industrial park. We have some areas that are adjacent to some other utilities in the area that might be beneficial to folks that want to develop, as well as a future, potentially future landfill site in this area as San Angelo continues to expand. But here's just kind of the aerial that you can see. All of it currently is undeveloped or not developed significantly. There's no real structures in the area. There's a couple of minor things, but nothing that's really impacting future development. We believe this is a great opportunity for the city to expand its city limits at this time, and as future projects come in, whether it's COSA DC or our other partners in economic development can negotiate items that will help continue to make San Angelo thrive. So with that, we did adopt the petition to hear this item. We are requesting today to adopt an annexation ordinance for the approximate 12,000, or 1,205 acres along Highway US 67 between Harriet Road and the interchange of US 277 and US 67 to be annexed into the city of San Angelo, and with a second reading to be scheduled on March, March the 4th.
Questions for Aaron?
Move to approve.
No, wait one second, please.
Is there any city funds that are required to make this project happen, or is it all on the owner?
Well, we are the owner of this property. Through the service agreement, we, we could start providing services. Since it's not developed, there are not significant services that the city would do. If there are developments that come forward, that would go through the standard plating process and the standard zoning processes, and through in those processes, they'd have to extend water and/or sewer if it's available, those types of things. I do know in the future, as the area develops, then that's more of a, an item for our public safety services, whether that be fire, police, ambulances, of how it increases in density and how we service that area. But as of today, there would not be any additional funds to bring this annexation in and start allowing folks to look at it for development.
Sounds like we need another fire station.
At some point, this area will probably be outside of the current service areas, particularly the one that's on Smith Boulevard and close to Pulliam, but that is certainly for future considerations to think. And as the city owns this land, there may be an opportunity in the near future to designate an area that is set aside for, all right, this is where we believe a future station would be. And then as, as that time comes, then that's a budget request that comes forward to how to fund that and get that moving forward.
Any other questions or comments? Then I'll accept Harry's request to approve the motion. I need a second.
Second.
Second by several people, so I think it is seconded. And so with that, is there any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. We'll move on to the last item on the agenda, which is item E. First reading of public hearing of an ordinance for Z24-17, a request for a zone change from the General Heavy Commercial Zoning District to the General Commercial Zoning District located at 2401 North Chadburn. And Aaron, you're on again.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council and Mr. Valenzuela. This is a rezoning for a property that has received some tiers funding. It's along the Chadburn Corridor. You can see there at 2401 North Chadburn Street. It's a building that's had some uses in the past, but they are changing that use to make it to general commercial spaces, which we're very excited about because right behind them, and a few months ago, we rezoned to RM1 for some future low-rise multifamily. And having some areas that are more general commercial would be very beneficial along this corridor. So this is in the neighborhood of Reagan and Ms. Lucy Gonzalez, District 4. The vision plan is commercial, and you can see it's 3.321 acres. And this is a request to go from the general heavy commercial, the general commercial and heavy commercial, down to just the general commercial, not allowing basically heavy commercial uses there. You can see here is the corridor on the left side. Most of the areas are the CGCH through the tiers program to receive the tiers funding. That is a requirement to go through a rezoning. It is no cost to the applicant to go through the rezoning to reduce that from the CGCH to one of the designated items. The applicant in this case is looking for the general commercial zoning because they want to do two retail shops there. And so you can see it also matches our vision plan of that area staying commercial. So it is compatible with the area. It is frontage on a major thoroughfare, which means the commercial zoning is still appropriate. There is a community need in this area to have more general retail type of places or stuff that do fit our commercial environment. And currently, since the property is completely built out, there is no effect on the natural environment. This did go to planning commission in January. They did recommend approval with a 6-0 vote, and the city staff also recommends approval from this change from general commercial, heavy commercial, to just straight general commercial at 2401 North Chadburn Street. Be happy to answer any questions.
Lucy, it's in your district. Would you like to make comment or offer?
I just can make a comment, and that's like what you just said, that this is going to be very beneficial to this area, and it's only going to improve it even more. So with that, I'm good with it, and move to approve is presented.
Is there a second? Second by Tommy. Public comment? Let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. At this point, we will move into our closed session. Executive session on the provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under The Following Sections. A, Section 551.071, Consultation With Attorney Regarding Joshua Lauter Milk Litigation; and B, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding Approximately 200.11 Acres Out Of Survey 20, WCRI.com, Abstract 8138, Approximately 143.78 Acres Out Of Survey 19, WCRI.com, AMI.co, Abstract 4018, and Approximately 8.39 Acres Out Of Survey 401-Have JW Johnson, Abstract 8647, and 2, Approximately 316 Acres Out Of Sarabee-Robinson, Survey Number 178, Abstract 8474. We will now adjourn to our executive session. Meeting is officially called back to order at 10:57 a.m. And having finished with our executive session, we have one announcement to make, and Tom Thompson, you're going to make that announcement, please.
Yes, ma'am. I want to make a motion authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an engagement agreement with the law firm of Denton Navarro to provide professional legal services relating to the Joshua Lauter Milk litigation.
Is there a second?
Yep.
Is there a second by Karen? And we will, obviously no public comment, so we will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. We will now consider approving various board nominations. The Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, Dr. Karen Frembegren for mayor, first term ending January 2027. Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Scott Allison, the mayor, to third term. Gary Cortez, SMD 4, and Jordan Seffick, SMD 5, to second term, all ending February 2027. And the Public Art Commission, Kathy Villa, SMD 3, to an unexpired term ending April 2026. May I have a motion for approval of all of the above, or if anyone would like some specifically pulled out, that would be fine. So move by Larry. Second by Lucy. Public comment, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Are there follow-up issues that council member would like to make any announcements on?
Yes, I'd like to ask for consideration of a future agenda item recommending a town hall to address Civic League Park security issues.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
We're actually, Karen, as far as an agenda item, we don't need one, just if you want to call just for a town hall meeting, we can schedule it and start working on a date on that.
So you're asking for the city to schedule a town hall meeting?
We are asking for the city to schedule a town hall meeting.
Yes, ma'am, we'll do that.
Thank you for the correction.
You're welcome.
Any other announcements? Tom?
Couple things we're looking at redoing, maybe the announcement for Kirby Park due to the weather, and then part two, I drove by just the past two days. We were working on, similar to a battery area there on like 19th and Armstrong, and we were doing, we did, we voted for a tax abatement. Did we ever come further with that?
Yes, sir. We're working on the agreement, the abatement agreement, and I've been in contact just last week with their attorneys on that, doing red lines, so we're finalizing that. Once we do that, we'll have to publish a notice for 30 days before a public hearing where that agreement will come back to you guys to approve it. So we've posted the notice just the other day. It should be March 18th meeting that it would come back for approval.
When was this approved for? Because the timeframe on this is ridiculous.
Yeah. So the prior approval was for the zone. This is for the agreement within that zone, and it has to be separate hearings.
I have a constituent that I know is actually in Lucy's district, but anyway, they're like four blocks south of that, and they asked me just this weekend, and I was like, we'll do some follow-up, so. If we're rolling there, we're good.
When did we approve? So I just need to know our timeframe, because it just seems like to me, it's like been six months.
I don't know. I don't remember.
Yeah, and this is...
Regardless, you're on it.
This is the end of February, and that discussion was October.
We're good.
Motion for approval, I mean, motion for adjournment or approval?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
We're going to adjourn, and there's a second, and I'm sure a 6-0 vote, but I'll call for it. Is there a vote? All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
We are officially adjourned at 11:01 a.m.